I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for March 12, 2019 at 7:20 PM. Good evening, everybody, and Happy National Pancake Day. Today, on our consent agenda, we're going to be going over the approval of the February 12, 2019 Regular Meeting Minutes, approval of the January bank balances, budget report for period-ending January 31, 2019, approval of the January check register, legal costs on projects, and the department head's monthly reports for February 2019. Items on our regular agenda include State of the City's Address, 2019-2021 Strategic Plan, report from the Gladstone School District by school board member Tracy Grant, Oregon Housing Planning Project, code audit advisory committee appointments, mutual agreement order, also called an MAO with Department of Environmental Quality, also known as DEQ, utility rate direction from council, and Ordinance 1496 amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, the GMC, Chapter 9.60 Camping Prohibited in Certain Places, Section 9.60.030 Violation Penalty to Class B Violation. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Here.
Counselor Neese?
Present.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Merserow?
Here.
Mayor Stempel?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two additions under Business Carried Forward. One of them is to award the bid for the aluminum boarding docks for the Meldrum Bar Park project, and the second item is to have a brief discussion about use of city facilities for political officials.
City facilities. All right. Anything else? Okay, first item is the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion? Someone make a motion then, please?
Mayor moved that we accept the consent agenda as presented. I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy, seconded by Counselor Tracy Todd and Counselor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Next is correspondence.
Thank you. Tonight, you do have correspondence on your dais. It's a letter from Shawn Asmutsen regarding a request for funding for the Gladstone High School 2019 Senior Graduation Party. This is an annual request that they come before you, and they are seeking a $500 donation for their graduation. I believe Shawn is here tonight. If you have additional questions, the city does not have any concerns with this funds coming out of its community promotion business development line item that we have.
Would you like to discuss it now and make a motion, or do we want to bring it up later?
I just said, go ahead, and let's make a motion.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we donate the $500 for the 2019 Senior Graduation Party.
I second.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese and seconded by Counselor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those -- oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that this has been an ongoing donation that the city's done in hopes that all of our seniors go to one last hurrah with their classmates in a organized, semi-controlled -- I've been on a couple of these -- I mean, controlled get-together in that they're not on the streets of Gladstone drinking and getting themselves hurt. So.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. We've done this for the last couple of years.
Oh, it goes back.
Well, and no, it goes back further, but we have approved it.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? $500. Thank you.
First, so before we start, I'd like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we're representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been so many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we feel personally, but we've made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules that we have to use for the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. Recent elected official and ethics training have made that crystal clear. I want you to know we appreciate you taking the time to come here and participate in this process, and I would like all of you to respect the desire of others to hear what we're talking about. So if you could keep your side discussions at a minimum, and please turn off your cell phones, that would be appreciated. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging. I hope all of you can help us do that. And I just wanted to remind you that we've changed the format where Business of the Audience is now at the end of the meeting, but that we do have audience participation during the agenda items. So again, please fill out the yellow cards if you want to speak, and let us know what agenda item you wish to speak or Business from the Audience. All right, so the first item is the State of the City's Address. And that is me. All right. Hello, everyone, and Happy 2019. I hope you all are ready for an incredible year, because I can assure you that the city of Gladstone is completely ready. The staff and elected officials sat down in January, and we looked at our strategic plan, looked to see what we've done, what we're doing now, and what the future looks like. And I know we've been busy, but seeing it on paper made us realize that we're actually working at warp speed, crazy. The first step was to look at the 2018-2022 Strategic Plan, which can be found on the city's website, and also, if you got a copy of the packet, it's there. Out of 32 objectives, ranging from downtown revitalization to employee recognition in our civic buildings, we completed almost everything. The only holes were our communication strategy, which will always be a fluid work in progress, researching the feasibility of a Gladstone fiber network, which we've removed from our strategic plan because it just didn't make any sense, revising our employee performance evaluation handbook, which staff will be addressing in the next strategic plan, and looking into annexation strategies. So, what is the State of Gladstone? Busy, busy, busy. Our staff are all wearing multiple hats and putting in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to implement and move forward all of the great projects that we currently have on our plate. As I've said many times, I think we're all trying to absorb the reality of how far behind we've actually been. But instead of kicking things further down the road, we're approaching them head-on. So a few of our major projects, our water, stormwater, sewer parks, and transportation master plans are in place. We're thoughtfully approaching the capital improvement projects identified and looking at efficiencies. Our incredible staff is looking at the big picture and checking off the low-hanging fruit when we think it might help mitigate the larger projects. We've invested in equipment desperately needed to keep our systems working the best way they can. And if you have any questions about the urgency of our infrastructure repairs, Public Works Director Jim Wynot submits a very colorful report every month in our city council packet showing just how bad it is. And as I've said, we have to laugh, because if we didn't, we would be crying. It is so bad. In completing our master plans, we were finally able to implement realistic system development charges. If we'd only put these in place years ago, we'd be in a lot better position today. But "if only" doesn't fix things, so instead, we're focusing on what can be done. We entered into an agreement with the county to end the library lawsuit. Instead of suing them, we are now partnering on a two-library solution being built and managed by the county that is truly a win-win for everybody in our district. Holding a library hostage is a ridiculous way to enrich and support our communities. The new Gladstone Library will be located on the corner of Portland Avenue and Dartmouth, where we are sitting now. It will be the centerpiece of our Main Street, right where it should be. The library project will start as the civic center is done, and I believe we will all be there the next day with sledgehammers knocking this building down. We've broken ground on our new civic center, ceremonially at least, which is our combined City Hall Police Station will be located next to Public Works on Portland Avenue. The thought and design put into this project have been inspiring, and I hope you all had the opportunity to look at the conceptual drawings and floor plans. This building will be the bookend to our downtown core and give us a place to do business that we can all be proud of. We expect to be complete in May of 2020, maybe sooner. We're crossing our fingers. Our Main Street, Portland Avenue, has gone through an extensive redevelopment plan, and we're now working with a consultant to strategize how we can encourage developers to invest in our core, and honestly, I cannot see a reason why they wouldn't want to. The replacement of the Trolley Bridge connecting Gladstone and Oregon City is now in the -- finally is in the feasibility study phase, actually in the feasibility study phase. The contract has been awarded, and we are off and running. This is a great project for our region, and it's connecting us in ways that are just wonderful. Our police department is running smoothly, though in a holding pattern while we look for a new police chief. Kim Yamaschita has graciously agreed to step in and manage the department while we go through the recruiting process. Our K-9 program is in place, and we're relooking at codes and ordinances that seem to have been a little vague. It amazes me how passionate people can get over something as simple as long-term street parking. I had no idea, concerns that people would have. Our fire department, the very first time I participated in a State of the City's event, my question from the audience was about the rating of our fire department and how it negatively affected their business property insurance. I am pleased to report that since that time, our department has done a 180. We are now a 24/7 staff department with shifts led by full-time captains. We have a strategic plan and standard of coverage that rivals anyone's in the region. We've expanded our technical training to include not only dive rescue, but added swift water and rope rescue, which makes sense since we're surrounded on three sides by water. In answer to that very first question, our insurance rating is evaluated every 10 years, and we are mid-cycle now. When it is completed, I'm confident our rating will significantly improve and a cost savings will be realized. We are also in the process of hiring a new fire chief. I would like to thank Jeff Smith for stepping up and helping with this transition, and I know he's wanting to leave any day, but you have to stay. Our food pantry is up and running. It closed temporary last summer, but with the help of some guerrilla volunteers, we're able to open it up again. We're looking for a solid funding source to help pay for a part-time coordinator in the amount of approximately $25,000 a year. The food pantry is critical to our county. We are a regional resource, serving people from all over the metro area, and I know we could do even more with more support. The pantry doesn't just feed the people. For many, it's a personal connection and access to support services that they don't get anyplace else. I'm so proud to be a volunteer there, and I highly encourage others to help as well. In closing, Gladstone is still that small town, where the police officers wave when they drive by, the community celebrations and high school football games that everybody attends. We don't want to lose that. It's who we are. All of these amazing projects will only strengthen our community and support the needs of our people. So stay tuned, there's a lot more to come.
Thank you very much. Next is item number eight, which is the 2019-2021 Strategic Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And your packet is really just the presentation of the strategic plan that Mayor Stempel just outlined. It's the first time that we've publicly been able to acknowledge that, and so you don't really need to do anything with it, but we wanted to present it to the public, and it will be available on our website.
I think there's copies back on the back table also.
That's correct.
Any discussion on the strategic plan? Other than to say, like I mentioned in my State of the Cities, that we completed just about everything, and this was the 2019-2021 Strategic Plan. Pretty amazing. Staff, thank you, all of your hard work. Nothing more? All right. So nine is report from the Gladstone School District. We don't have anybody here.
We'll be Tracy here.
Excellent report. No, okay. Well, Tracy's not here, so that's good. The school district must be doing wonderful things. Number 10 is the Oregon Housing Planning Project Code Audit Advisory Committee Appointments.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor, Council. What you have before you this evening is not a regular appointment to one of your boards, committees, and commissions. As you know, we're going through the process of doing a code audit titled Chapter 17 specifically in regards to our housing allowances. And when we had our severely rent burden presentation back in December, we talked about how we received some grant funds through DLCD to have them look and hire a consultant to look and review our codes for housing. Part of that means that we have to create an ad hoc city committee, which is somebody that's appointed for a specific purpose, and then when that purpose is done, the committee sunsets. So if you look at your city council rules per Resolution 1129, in order to appoint people to an ad hoc committee, staff needs to make a recommendation to the mayor, and then the mayor and the council need to concur with those recommendations. John Southgate is our consultant that's leading the staff on this work that you have before you. The proposed member list is on Page 10-2. There are a couple of changes that I wanted to bring to your attention that I found out this afternoon, where it says, "Second representative for the Abernathy Neighborhood Group." That will be Liz Wease, L-I-Z-W-E-A-S-E.
Okay. Spell her last name again, please.
W-E-A-S-E. And I'm just going to start and publicly acknowledge, we have Randy Thomas from the Abernathy Neighborhood Group. Liz Wease will be the second representative. You have Jeff Waters from the Gladstone School District, Randy Roulette, the Planning Commission Liaison, Jill Smith, County Housing Authority, Julie Garver, Innovative Housing, Clay Crowhurst, Northwest Housing Alternatives, Dennis Marsh, Downtown Property Owner, Michael Maxwell, Downtown Property Owner. And we do have a rep from the Seventh-day Adventist, however, it is David Schwinghammer, and that is S-C-H-W-I-N-G-H-A-M-M-E-R. And we're thrilled to have somebody from the SDAA on this committee. The architect is going to be Jennifer, who is our architect on the City Hall Police Department. Jennifer's last name is Marshasek. Sorry, these are not common last names. And then we also would like to add a representative from the Historical Society, and that would be Bill Osborne.
So Dan Fowler, is he not?
Yes, sorry, I skipped his name there. Dan Fowler has committed. He is a for-profit developer representative on that committee.
It's a great group, very diverse.
I think it's a very diverse group.
These are the people we want involved.
And ultimately, this group will be reviewing the draft audit, code revisions, and there are other layers where we have a stakeholders list, and then the planning commission, and ultimately, the city council will be approving those recommendations.
Okay. So, any questions? Concerns?
How did this list -- where did this list come from, and are all these people Gladstone residents?
Well, the list kind of started when we had our SB severely rent burden public housing issue. And they don't all have to be Gladstone residents, because you're trying to find a diverse group of those that have done affordable housing projects with other agencies that can provide Gladstone input on how we can revise our code. But we really sat down and we sent out an Excel sheet to mass community asking for those who wanted to be involved. And then we looked at the different layers and the different representation. Some of these was, you know, like for the school district, I met with the superintendent and said, "Who would you like to be representative?" John Southgate spoke with most of these people that were on here to make sure they were committed to doing the two meetings. Kim Huey wanted to participate for the Historical Society, but she couldn't do the time commitments. We had Mr. Osborne on the stakeholders list. He'd like to be on the advisory committee instead, and we're fine with that. But to answer your question, it was John Southgate and I reaching out to these different organizations to make sure that we had a diverse group that would be representative of Gladstone.
With the right experience.
Correct.
I'm excited that we got the representation that we've got.
Yeah, we have good people in there.
Mhm, some really good people.
Well, that -- I moved that we support staff and the mayor's recommended appointments to the above ad hoc committee to provide feedback on the Gladstone Housing Code Audit proposal.
I second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Tracy Todd and Counselor Merserow. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you very much.
Our first meeting will be March 27, so we are ready to go.
March 27. So are you going to come back after they've gone through the two meetings with recommendations?
It has to go to the Stakeholders Planning Commission and then city council, and that will be probably in May.
John?
And he's already out the door.
Yeah, he's gone.
He's trying.
The question was about coming back to you.
In May.
Yes, and keep in mind, too, this is only a code audit.
Right.
So you and anyone else who's interested in this issue or concerned about it is going to get another whack at it. There'll be a series of recommendations. The draft document is 30 pages. I expect all of you to read every single page.
Of course.
Definitely.
And but it'll be, here's things you should look at.
Okay.
And then if you agree with some or most of them, then you'll direct -- we've been talking about getting additional state funding to pay for the actual code changes.
Implementation.
So that'll be future phase.
Perfect.
Oh, okay.
Great, thank you.
You'll get two shots at the --
Oh, okay.
So the first one is just a draft, this is what we think should happen?
Here's a bunch of things you should consider changing. And hopefully, again, it shouldn't be prestigious, I hope you'll get a chance to read it. There's a lot of good stuff there. Some of it's probably going to be somewhat controversial, and you'll have a chance to weigh in on it. But even whatever is the outcome of that, the code audit phase, then they'll come back. A separate consultant would come back with formal proposed code changes through the planning commission, of course.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Brett, no, you do have a great group. It's going to be a very good mix of people.
Good, thank you.
I'm here tonight.
Thank you, John.
Next item is number 11, Mutual Agreement Order, the MAO with Department of Environmental Quality.
Now, how Public Works Director Jim Wynot come up and guests. It should be no surprise to all of you tonight that we will be discussing this mutual agreement in order.
Good evening, Mayor Stempel and Council. Like Jackie said, this has been probably a good year in the making, and we've been having conversations about this, and we finally got it hot off the press here last week. And I'd like to introduce Tiffany Yelton-Braun with -- she's Water Quality Source Control Manager with Department of Environmental Quality. Well, that was a mouthful. Your business card's got to be just full. So we're here tonight to ask council to authorize staff to sign the mutual agreement in order. It's in your packet there. A little bit of history, well, a little bit of long history. Gladstone has a long history of overflow and raw sewage to the river. Clackamas River, as a matter of fact, right at the end of Portland Avenue, there's an overflow there. Typically, every time we get heavy rains, there's a lot of I-N-I, inflow and infiltration that gets into the system through a series of manners, storm system direct connects, leaking pipes and manholes, roof drains connected to the sewer. Those are just some examples, and as Mayor Stempel mentioned earlier, you've probably have seen some of those pictures in our monthly report.
They're lovely.
Because we're showing them, and yeah, those ones aren't so attractive, but they show -- they make the point. And with that, the Oregon revised statute and the Oregon administrative rules both prohibit the discharge of raw sewage into the rivers. It's just, you're not supposed to do it. So with that, the MAO, in a nutshell, there's a lot of pages there, but in a nutshell, what it's saying is the city will be paying $4,800 in fines for current violations, so since the last time we got fined, which has been a year or so, a couple of years, actually. And then on Page 2, you'll notice there's five bulleted items there, is what we -- what the city is going to be responsible for over the next five years. It's pretty spelled out there. And in a nutshell, what that is, is we need to conduct a comprehensive I-N-I study. So we need to go out through the system, do some smoke testing, evaluate the system in great detail, and find out where all these issues are. You'll see, when I say smoke testing, we're going to force smoke down into the sewer system, and you're going to see smoke coming out of somebody's chimney or out of somebody's gutter, or out of a sewer manhole, or a storm catch basin, or something like that. So we're going to find where all the problems are in this study. You may even see it coming up out of the ground, you know, with a broken pipe or something. And then on top of that, we need to develop an annual budget to address I-N-I per what the study shows. So after this study gets done, we're going to have to look at what the needs are, and we're going to have to develop a plan to start fixing these things. And then also, we need to remove all the major sources of I-N-I, like catch basins. So we already have identified, the staff has been doing some pre-work on this stuff. We've identified at least 12 stormwater catch basins in our system that go right to the sanitary sewer. So that's a direct connection. For example, down here on the corner of Claritin and Portland Avenue. And you look at the surface area that that brings in, it's a huge surface area. But these are not easy fixes. You don't just go out there, "Oh, we'll just stick in a catch basin." No, you need to put pipe to go somewheres.
Mhm.
And kind of funny, as you've probably seen in our last monthly report, down here on Gloucester, the city actually, some years ago, installed some storm system in the road to pick up these catch basins. Well, they did that. They tied into the catch basins. Well, lo and behold, they never disconnected them from the sewer, and the sewer was at the bottom of the catch basin, so they were literally --
La la la.
It was just pointless.
I don't want to hear this.
So in the meantime, we have gone out and temporary capital's off. We still plan on going out in the road, digging it up and abandoning it correctly. So the staff has been working towards trying to eliminate the sanitary sewer overflows of the river. So with that, I'm going to give myself a little break and let Tiffany talk a little bit about the advantages of the city entering into this agreement, and just some other DEQ stuff.
Mayor Stempel, council members, thanks for letting me speak this evening. The mutual agreement in order is an enforcement document, and it does take care of the violations that have happened to date that are documented in the order, and does set a penalty, but it also sets a path forward that we're all -- that we would all be agreeing on. And so what it does is that allows us to say, "Here's the path forward. If you're moving on this path forward by these dates, then if overflow happens of a certain magnitude, we will keep the penalty at a certain level," and that helps with future planning. You're not then having to be, as if it were, when we do enforcements now and we work with a community or an industry over time, if they haven't corrected the problem, of course, the penalties go up and up and up. And what this does is this gives you some certainty that if you do have an overflow, that you know what the outcome would be for the penalty. But I think more to the point, it just sets a good communication dialogue between us. We know, again, what to expect. We know what to follow up with you all on, and we can answer questions. Should we get questions from the public about, "Well, what is City of Gladstone committing to do about this?" I will be completely honest, it does not protect you completely from third-party lawsuits, but it does make it very clear that you've already identified the problem and that you are working on a solution, which usually takes a lot of the oomph out of a third-party lawsuit. So that's what we feel is part of the advantage to entering into a mutual agreement in order.
Thank you. So I just wanted to finish off with saying some of the other things that we've done. You know, we've modified some of our storm manholes, redirected flow. We also have installed a flow meter in our sewer system down on Clackamas Boulevard, which is one of our main trunks, to start monitoring, trying to determine if we're making improvements. And also, it really helps us determine how far out in the system our problem is. It's going to help us identify some of that stuff. And all of this stuff is identified in the master plan that we just finished in 2017. This is just --
Okay.
We're starting to pick away at some of that low-hanging fruit that was talked about earlier.
Okay.
So, and another thing that we've noticed just recently, now that we have a piece of equipment that can go out and clean lines, we are down cleaning that line on Clackamas Boulevard, which has never been cleaned, as far as the people that are on staff know. Boulevard, which has never been cleaned, as far as the people out on staff know, and they've been here twenty-five to thirty years. And we are pulling out, which you've probably seen in last month's, month's report anyway, this is one of those attractive pictures, big balls of grease. So this line is restricted. Now that we've actually got it cleaned and we're able to TV it, it also has a big hump in it. So the, so, yeah, it's just silly, some of the stuff we're finding out there. But, so we're in the process right now of analyzing to replace that one section of pipe. Unfortunately, it's going to be kind of expensive and deep, and I don't know that we have the funds to do it. So that'll be our next subject that we'll talk about. But anyways, with that, are there any questions from Council on the Mutual Agreement in Order?
Well, I guess, I had a question. I'm assuming our attorneys already looked at this, and you're comfortable with all the language?
Yeah, we have. I mean, we've, we've seen these for other clients as well, so I guess I'd want to assure you that, that you're not unique in this regard. And it's, you know, not a terribly surprising document, I'll put it that way. I did have just one question. It's more of a clarification, I guess, and it's just probably for DEQ. But it talks about in Section, Paragraph Three, the fact that the city in DEQ recognized that during periods of heavy rainfall, this manhole will overflow again. I mean, it's referring to a specific manhole.
Yes. The one with the alarm.
The, okay. And, and then down, you know, further in the agreement, I believe it's, let's see, so I can give you the citation, sorry. Six CB, and it's getting into specific fines for future discharges?
Mm-hmm.
So those are listed there, depending on the volume. But then there's also the, in Paragraph Eight, violations set forth in Paragraph Three will be addressed per DEQ's Enforcement Guidance Internal Management Directive. The question I have is just, are those two things distinct? It seems like in CB, the amounts are listed out based on what the overflow, or what the, what the discharge would be. But then that language in Eight seems to say that there would be a determination made about what those penalties would be. They seem a little inconsistent, or are they addressing different things, I guess, is my question.
Okay. I will have our environmental law specialists look at that, because to be honest, I can't answer the difference between the two. If there's, so I'll take your question and get back to you.
Okay. It just seems if it's covered above specifically, then Eight seems, just seems odd to have in there. So that would be the only comment, I guess, I would have.
Okay, thank you. And then the only other question I have is for Jim. Are you confident that we're going to be able to make these repairs or upgrades in the timeframe that's allotted in this agreement?
It's going to depend a lot on our next discussion.
Okay.
Because these things don't happen for, you know, they cost.
Right. I just don't want to set us up for failure.
Right, yes.
We're already failing.
They are.
And, and this is not because of the council, the city's hands are tied, and we, we struggled with, do you put utility rate discussion first and then adopt this document, or do you adopt the document first? And really, we don't have any choice but to enter into this agreement or pay an inordinate amount of fines for the next several years. So to, to answer your question is, we think next topic will help you understand how we can get these items done in this agreement.
We're capable of doing it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Councilor Reisner?
Yeah, you mentioned about a cost for another survey or study. I mean, we've already studied the sewers, I mean, to death. We know they need to be replaced, like we're going to be talking about here in, you know, hopefully sooner than later tonight.
Well, one of the items in the sanitary sewer study says to do a, to do an I, a specific I and I study. The city did not go out during this master plan that finished up in eighteen, or in seventeen, they did not go out and do smoke testing and stuff. They know there's an I and I issue. They narrowed it down to where they think the worst issues are. But now it even says in that master plan to do extensive I and I studies, go out and identify the problems so you can fix them. Instead of just, because it really doesn't make financial sense to go, okay, we're just going to start replacing pipe from the overflow and just start working out in our system. There's probably a section of that pipe that are fine. Let's find out where the problems are and address those problems, it's the most cost-effective way to do it. So that's what this I and I study is going to do, is it's going to hit the problems and not just be replacing all the pipe. I mean, granted, someday, at some point, it's going to get, need to be replaced, but it's kind of a way of finding the lower hanging fruit, in a sense, is doing this I and I study.
The impression I got, I'm sorry, did you want to follow up with that, please?
Yeah, okay. Excuse me. So what I wanted to add is that when you do an infiltration and inflow study, then you can actually find, okay, this, this particular manhole that we're most concerned about, because it goes directly to the river, you might be able to figure out what will have the biggest impact on that, on that manhole first, and deal with that, and then work out from there. So it's, it helps you use your, it helps you use the information you might already have in a very strategic way.
Yeah, take care of the biggest issue, the biggest bang for the buck, in a sense, first versus fixing a bunch of stuff that really doesn't have effect on our overall health.
So the plan then, just for, I mean, those out there watching, listening, and in the audiences, we don't just plan to start up on the hill and replacing everything until we hit the river.
Right.
It's going to be, you know, areas that are the most need first, and then...
Right.
As time goes on for the hundred-plus miles of...
Right. And to elaborate on a, a study a little bit more, we are going to do a lot of this in-house. We just purchased a smoke machine, well, they call it a vape machine now, because it doesn't last as long, but anyways, it's kind of a little funny joke. Anyways, we just purchased this machine.
I have no explanation.
We're going to start partnering, as a matter of fact, I just spent some time on the phone today with Wes Lynn, they're wanting, they're needing to do it. Wes is doing it, Oregon City is doing it. So as a partner with Wes, we're actually going to be partnering with Wes on some of this study. And they, they've just finishing up their master plan, and they have a lot of studies showing where the, how it's cost-effective to go out and fix the I and I versus building more treatment, for example. And, and same with us, we're not going to have to pay for as much treatment. We're treating all this rainwater, it's kind of silly. So we plan on doing a lot of this in-house. It's, you're going out and smoke testing, you're documenting stuff, and you're finding out where the big issues are. So we may use a consultant to help us put the numbers together, I haven't got that far yet, but we're going to, we're attempting to do a lot of this in-house.
Okay. Follow-up question then, in regards to DEQ. You know, as alluded to, the big hammer, but my understanding from talking with DEQ people and, and others, that they're more of a, you know, toothless tiger lately than, well, look, you know, bullet glass and, yeah, I mean, and there was a big article about the dowels recently, and, you know, I've talked to Greg over at, you know, who used to be DEQ, and, and then, you know, I see constantly where industry has polluted our rivers and have basically got, you know, hand slapped. I don't know if this is considered a hand slap for forty-eight hundred dollars, but, you know...
It could be a lot worse.
So...
Would you like me to address the penalty a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
So, feel free.
Yeah, so when we do a penalty, we do a calculation that, thank you, that does consider factors of how responsive the violator is. And the City of Gladstone's been very responsive, so you've got a, like a plus mark in your formula. So we gave you what we felt was a fair penalty that recognized the fact that the city has already put together quite a bit of work and quite a bit of planning to, to address this particular overflow. So we, we wanted to give you that recognition in the penalty.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sure. Can you talk a little bit about some of the other factors that go into that as well? Not just that, right? There's several ones, like...
Yeah, there's, so the penalty formula has also frequency and severity, and the one I was actually mentioning is sort of mental state, is the words we use in, in the formula. You know, is, is the violator doing this after they've been made known that it's a violation, or are they taking steps to, to correct the action? So, you know, I won't, I won't put a gloss on it. We've had some very severe overflows from this point. We also completely understand the City of Gladstone's current state, where you've had a lack of resource available, human resource and financial resource to do some of this work. You've made steps towards it that are even documented here. You know, this overflow point had not been previously alarmed. So there was probably violations happening that the city didn't know about or may have known about, we weren't informed of. The Clean Water Act itself and the rules that we implement really, at their, at their heart, rely a lot on the honor system. They rely on people reporting and self-reporting violations. And if we don't know something's happening, and if there's no way to know that something's happening, that's, that's a problem. You all have already stepped up to that problem and put an alarm there. So we want to recognize that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Someone like to make a motion out?
Well, actually, I was going to ask if we could wait for our attorney to...
Yes.
Work things out and come back later.
I just think it's just worth getting that clear. I mean, and, and for your benefit, I think what, what Jackie and I were just talking about this, the easiest solution from my perspective would be just, if it in fact is dealing with the same thing, is just to strike Section Eight, because it seems like the violations are, the penalties are specifically laid out in six B.
So waiting, is that going to have a, waiting a month, is that going to be a problem?
No, I'll make this call tomorrow.
But then we, it has to come back to us.
You can put it on consent agenda for your April ninth meeting, and if DEQ knows that, I think we'll be okay for that.
Okay, because I know there's some tight timelines in here.
Well, another offer, another option is to approve it, striking out Eight, we can sign it. DEQ still has to sign it. If they don't sign it, they have to redo the document. We could do the same thing. So it has the potential of making it run smoother, if that's possible, right? Or is it that simple?
It may not be that simple.
Okay.
Because we don't know if they're in conflict or...
We want to approve a clean document.
Okay.
Is that timeline, though, is that acceptable, I guess, the fact that it would have to come back to the Council for...
In a month.
Okay.
Okay. As long as it works for you.
We're already heading in that direction. We're already doing stuff, so we're not, we're not waiting until this document is signed to start doing the stuff. So that would be the only, the dates in here, you know, we're going to run up against those dates, but we're already doing stuff.
Right, and then we do need to acknowledge the civil penalty of four thousand eight hundred dollars is a global settlement for past violations, and that will come out of the sewer fund.
But we don't have to make a motion or anything on that?
That's part of the agreement.
Okay.
So we will make that modification if warranted and bring it back to the consent agenda on April ninth.
Okay. Is that all right with everybody? Okay.
Council, thank you for coming and seeing this.
All right, thank you very much and for working with us. Talking sewer is never fun, but...
We don't want poo in the river.
We don't.
Be for yourself.
We really don't.
All right, next is Mr. Jim Wynott again. We're having a utility rate direction from Council Discussion.
So just to kind of back up a little bit, we, we, when we met for the Council goal-setting, we had this conversation, and what the Council asked staff to do is come back with a couple different options, which are in your packet. But before we do that, I wouldn't mind just kind of, for the audience's sake, and remind everybody, just some of the history, how the city's, what the city's done recently and stuff. So as mentioned, as Mayor Stipple mentioned, the city has accomplished all of its master plans between 2014 and 2017. They also accomplished rate studies for all of our utilities between 2014 and 2018. So all these reports are fairly brand-new, and the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on these. So there's a lot of, to your point, Councilor Reisner, there's, there's been a lot of studies going on, a lot of professionals in this town over the last several years evaluating it and bringing you, these reports tell you what to do to fix it. We have done rate increases in the last couple of years, and those are listed in the staff report, and I'll just mention them just as a, just for the audience, if they don't have the staff report. So in July of 2017, we implemented a stormwater fee. Started out at five dollars a month for a typical single-family home.
Which we did not have before, at all.
Correct, so we implemented this. This is, this is a brand-new fund that the city did not have, and this came at the recommendation of these master plants. You need to start maintaining your storm system, you know, you got more DEQ issues and your NPDS and all these requirements that you're able to do, and it was basically being subsidized by the other funds, what little we were doing. So that happened July of 2017, so about a year and a half ago. In January of 2018, we really tried to stagger some of these rate increases, they weren't all happening at once. So January of 2018, we raised our water rates by a buck fifty-eight for a typical single-family home, and the sewer rate by fifty cents a month. Then again, in July of 2018, we added the other five dollars to make a total of ten dollars for the stormwater utility, and which is still below, as you'll see in some of the comparisons in your packet, still below what all other, most other cities are. And then most recently, January of this year, so just a couple of months ago, we raised the water rates by a dollar ninety-nine a month, and the sewer rate again about almost fifty cents, it's a forty-eight cents, actually. So in the last year and a half, the city has raised its utility rates and implemented a stormwater utility, a total of about fourteen dollars and fifty-five cents a month. That's what we've done to date. We haven't started seeing all that money come in, we just did a rate increase here a couple of months ago, so we're just, you know, we haven't built a lot of funds up to really start doing a lot, although we have done a lot recently. So, you know, collecting over a year and a half on some of them, starting out. So that's just a little history of where we're at in the rate discussion. So back to the two scenarios you have in front of you there, we have a, what your rates would look like, a typical, typical single-family home, if we did what the rate studies recommend doing. And what those, and what those show is you would, you'd basically be doubling your rates in the first year. And then again, half again in the second year, and then you'd basically be sitting at cost of living from there on out. This is pretty much what the rate studies show. The other option I brought to you, which was your guys' direction, is what would it, what would it look like if we raised, if we kept our, our rates at no more than ten percent rate increase a year? And, and that shows in your second graph there. And what that would mean for the first year would be a seven dollar a month increase, and that would take effect if you did that until January of 2020. So this, this is not like today or tomorrow, this is, this would happen in, in January if you were to agree to that. So with that, we feel, staff feels that we would be able to, if we continued that, it would take about five years of that in order to address this MAO, back to your question.
At ten percent.
At ten percent. And that would address the, what we believe the issues are in the Mutual Agreement in Order statement, fixing all these stormwater catch basins, and start dealing with some of the I and I issues. Again, until the study's done, we're not going to know that for sure. But we have identified twelve stormwater catch basins connected to the city systems, we know that for sure. And it's actually in our master plan. The master plan has those spelled out. It's basically two point six million dollars to fix all that stuff, those, those known issues. If you divide that up by the five years, I think it's like five hundred and, five hundred and some thousand dollars a year or whatever, and if you do these ten percents, that would, that would get us there. But you'd have to do it for five years. So there's a big gap there. There's a hundred percent and there's a ten percent. So there's the, there's the range we have to work with. I also wanted to talk just a little bit about what construction costs, because it, I don't think a lot of people realize how much it costs to replace the infrastructure in the city. We do have some recent projects that we've done. We did the Addy Street Community Development Block Grant just a year and a half ago. We are actually out on the street right now to do another two blocks of Community Development Block Grant on Clarendon. Our construction cost per foot for the Addy Street project was about $575 a foot. The engineer's estimate for the one that's out on the street right now is $711 a lineal foot. I think that estimate's a little bit high. We will know here in the next month or so, because the bids will be coming in. I guessed around $600 a lineal foot. And that is to replace curbs, sidewalk, pavement, water, sewer, storm. I mean, that is literally making that street brand-new and doing it right. Putting in laterals, putting in cleaning... I mean, basically making it so you're not back in that street for several years. So with that number, with that $600 a lineal foot, just to put some things into perspective for everybody, the city owns about 40 miles of infrastructure, give or taken, in all the different areas. That comes out to about 211,000 lineal feet. So if you do that math, tie $600 a foot, you're looking at the city's infrastructure being worth about $126 million, if you were to replace it all in today's dollars. So let's hypothetically put it into perspective a little bit more. If you were to expect your infrastructure to last 100 years, you would need to spend approximately $1.26 million a year to replace it, if it lasted 100 years. That's just... That's just math. It's just... It's very simple math. Hundred years, you replace one hundredth of your system. Boom, boom, boom. Tell you right now, we're not spending that. We're not spending anywhere near that. So I don't know how long everybody expects it to last, but I think it's being pretty optimistic to get 100 years out of it. Do I have anything else here? So with this also, like I said, we're not recommending we do any rate increases right away, because we just did them. It's on an annual basis. It wouldn't happen until January if we chose to do that. Over the next six months, the staff has planned on doing some open houses, some public messaging, inserts in the bill, educating what the system's infrastructure is like, and trying to get some of this information out there, so everybody has all this information. So that's what the city plans on doing, with whatever direction we get from council, over the next six months. Because typically, when we update our master fee schedule, it's usually around October, November, you know, because it usually takes effect in January. One last thing. Also with this, we are anticipating utilizing the right-of-way fees, which they... It says right in the resolution that it's used to maintain and replace your infrastructure. We are going to ask council in a future date to modify the language a little bit that's in there, because it's confusing. It says to utilize it to maintain your infrastructure in a right-of-way, but it also says to put it right in the street fund. Well, then that limits it to the street infrastructure. And I believe the intent, when it was done, going back and looking at the meeting minutes and stuff, it was for all the city's infrastructure in a right-of-way. So we would ask in the future to modify that, to say... To spread that across the water, sewer, storm, and the street fund, those four, basically all the infrastructure in a right-of-way.
Yeah, which makes sense.
And for clarification, right now, the right-of-way fees come into the general fund, and they're allocated to Public Works Street Fund.
Right.
So they do not stay or not spent in the general fund. They are allocated to the street fund.
Right. Yeah, if you look in the revenue source in the general fund, you'll see it come in. But then if you flip over to the street fund and the revenue coming into that, you'll see a transfer out from the general fund into there. And just a little clarification on that, too. It's not to be confused with franchise fees. So franchise fees do not get transferred in. This resolution that was adopted a couple of years ago was just for right-of-way. So it's a small percentage of those fees are in there, but they are spelled out in the general fund revenue. You'll see right-of-ways versus all the franchise. So it's like 200 and... If I'm not mistaken, yeah, 225,000 for this current fiscal year.
Okay. If you have $126 million of infrastructure, nobody wants to raise rates. We've very thoughtfully gone through a process, an expensive process, of hiring consultants that said, "This is what the city needs to do to fix your infrastructure." We don't believe that that is politically the correct approach for you in Gladstone. So what we're offering is a phased-in approach at 10% that's going to add about $7.50 to the monthly bill. We need direction, because we're going to be bringing to you a proposed budget for 1921 in the next couple of weeks. We'd like to build in those 10% for the next two years, run that through the Budget Committee. And then, in the meantime, like Jim said, Barney and Worth, who is here tonight, and Clark wants to hear your comments, if you have them. How do we tell our story in Gladstone about why you guys are the ones that have to make these tough decisions? And we will do the proper talking points and public messaging to talk about how much deferred maintenance we have in Gladstone, and the reason why we're here today. So we will provide you the support that you need to publicly message that. And we're sorry that we're putting you in this position to do this, but we really have no other alternative, unless you want to go out for a $125 million bond to the vote of the people. And I don't think that's tolerable either.
Nope.
But this is a way for us to thoughtfully start addressing our infrastructure needs, with DEQ also saying, "You need to be paying attention to this."
And this is a bare-bones minimum approach. Don't get us wrong. This isn't like, this is going to be, oh, all of a sudden, all the streets are going to be torn up in town, and things are getting fixed. This is to deal with some of the basic stuff here, this mutual agreement in order, and some minor stuff, so...
So this 10% will address the MAO issues, because there's a deadline where we have to be complete by January of 2024.
Correct. So if you do the... If you do all the math, and you add up all the increases over the five years, that gets us to that total amount that the master plan says it's going to cost to do that. I'm going to do my best to try to figure out a better way to do it, and more cost-effective way, but I'm going off what the professionals are saying it costs to put in infrastructure. And some of these areas that do not have storm systems, you have to run pipe a long ways, and it's expensive.
Well, that was my next question, is, we don't have a stormwater system.
We... It's very minimal, yes.
We have to create a stormwater system.
Well, and just to... Public Works is hornin' a little bit, and your guys is hornin', you know. We actually... You guys have noticed that we've, for several years, we flooded in front of the high school. Every time it rains, it floods. You did not see that this year. That was because we have a piece of equipment now. We went down there, and we cleaned that line. It took almost a month. It was three-quarters full. It's an 18-inch line, it's three-quarters full of rock. It literally took so long to clean that, it's like... It was insane. Literally, it was down there for a month. We did not flood. Honestly, I'm wondering if we need to replace that line now. So if you look at it like that, if we do not need to replace it, we may need to upsize it, but still, if we don't need to replace the line, or we can put it off for a long time, we are... A truck just paid for three of those trucks. You know?
I have a question with this. How are we comparing to other cities? I mean, with what you're saying here, what is happening around us? What are the other cities doing?
So the other cities, their... Oak Lodge Water Services, for example, is going through a master plan study right now. So I anticipate some rate increases that they're going to have. This chart, or this bar graph that I showed you, was anticipating, and also, that 10% is anticipating our pass-throughs, which $25 on everybody's bill doesn't even go to the city. It just goes right through to your sewer treatment and your water treatment. We're assuming they're going to raise their rates 3.5%. They could come back to us and say, "Well, we just did a master plan, and now we've got to raise our rates whatever." We're just assuming they're going to stay at cost of living. That's what they're anticipating at this point, but as they dig into their systems, it may be different. So there are some things that are outside of the city's control, and a good portion of that bill, I really tried to estimate what they are going to do and calculate that in as well. So trying to keep the total bill under that 10%, if we go with that minimal.
And that 10%, is that going to start in January of 2020?
That was the idea, is to start... So stay on an annual basis. Don't do this. We just did it.
Right.
January, because we're still in the last by-anim.
And I know, that's why I wanted to be clarified here.
Yes. Yeah, so we've got six, eight months to message and have conversations with the community.
Okay.
In regards to the bar graph, some of the other cities have other fees that they've included, like Oregon City has, I think, a road fee that they...
Right.
So I am assuming that that was taken out, that these are apples to apples?
No, these are comparisons to what... If someone in the City of Gladstone has... Uses six units of water, what if they moved into the City of Westland, or into Oak Lodge Water Services? So it takes everything into consideration. What would your bill be?
Okay, so it is apples to apples, huh?
Well, no, it includes their... All their fees that are on their bill. What would it cost you, with what you use here, to go move into another city? We tried to be as comparable there. So if you use six units here, their bill doesn't include six units of water, like the City of Gladstone does. So we had to do the math to figure out, if you use six units, what would your bill be over there? And that's how we did it.
But what about the other add-ons that they're... That they have?
That's included in here.
It is, okay.
Right. So basically, they're paying for... For example, over to City Westland, they got a parks fee on there.
Right, right.
That is included in there. But that's what their utility bill costs, because that's what they're calling it. So I did not try to hide any of that stuff. It's just, this is what their bills are.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Tracy?
Director Why Not, what's the standard condition, to your best knowledge, best available knowledge? What's the standard condition of the infrastructure systems at Westland or Oregon City?
Well, I can speak for Westland fairly well. I was there for 18 years, so, yeah. Their system was in pretty bad shape back in the '90s, and they started doing some rate increases. They got repealed and some different things. So they've been on this long, slow road of doing these minimal rate increases, and they're getting... They're getting there. Yes, they still have issues, but they're dumping millions of dollars into their system manually. So they're heading in the right direction. Do they have problems? Absolutely. They've got several miles of AC pipe as well. Actually, not as much as us, but they... You know, I mean, they have their issues. As far as Oregon City, talking with the Public Works Director over, they have issues, but they are a lot better funded. So back in the '90s, the city... I don't know how far into this detail you want to get, but the cities... Oregon City and Westland co-owned a water treatment plant, South Fork Water Board. Well, back in the early '90s, they needed to updo or rebuild their intake, so they raised their rates up big time. Well, Oregon City went out and got some bonds. Westland did not, but then there was a repeal... They repealed those rates through the votes. And they basically got the rates pulled back. Oregon City did not. So that's why Oregon City's sitting in a little better spot, because they were able to not repeal them back, because they had obligations and stuff. So they are sitting a little bit better. And they just went through, because their bonds were paid off, so they just went through this, getting that fixed through the voters, and they did get it fixed. So they are sitting a little bit better because of that. Westland's on that slow boat to China kind of a thing, where they're working on, but they are... They've been staying consistent with raising their rates of what's allowed.
But at least they identified it in the '90s, which we did not.
You know, I kind of joke, and I don't have the facts, and I haven't done the numbers, but if the City of Gladstone had just kept up with cost of living over the last 30 or so years, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation.
You're talking about on an inflationary...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you know, like our...
3%?
Yeah, exactly.
When's the last time we saw 7% inflation?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Really? And that's what it would have taken?
Yeah.
So the reason we are where we are is because nobody wanted to make the unpopular decision of raising rates, even just what the cost of living would...
Yeah, and even if you're sitting healthy...
Yeah.
Even if you're sitting healthy, if you don't raise your rates, the cost of inflation, you just went backwards. Unless you're sitting so good, you can afford to go backwards. So, I mean, that's just... Our pipe materials go up, our electricity bills go up, all the... You look at our budget, and most of our money's just like, we're just bringing it in, and we're buying parts, we're buying electricity, we're buying this, we're buying that. I mean, all those things go up, and that's inflation.
Well, what, minimum wage, what, it's gone up 35% in the last, what, two years, two and a half years? I mean, so...
Yeah, Personnel Services has gone up quite a bit, and you need staff to do stuff. I mean, there's no...
And that's what's sad, because we've sat on it for so long and have not raised rates, and that's why we're in the situation we're in today.
We put very bad Band-Aids on things forever, yeah.
Right.
Is it possible to come up with another... Since we're... We're not moving on anything tonight, right? We're not... We're just listening to...
Just giving...
You're looking for guidance on council. Maybe one of the things that... I would hate to say 10% is good to fix 12 basins, and we're going to kick the can down the road again. I don't think that's a responsible position for us to be in. As unpopular and untenable as rate increases are, I understand that. And I know that we're going to have other pressures from other external forces. Is there a possibility, Director Why Not, of you potentially putting together some additional rate structuring tables?
Absolutely.
That might grab at 30% or grab at 25% and look at time horizons, so that you could get hold maybe within seven years, so that we're fully subsidizing the rate and grabbing what we can, so that you can do the initial C...
Right.
The initial capital improvement work, initial R and R, but also out over an extended time period, so we're not talking about a massive hit. When we looked at these numbers, I don't know, what was it, a year ago, when we were going through these numbers? I mean, I think it was more than shocking at the time for all of us. We understand that it's not... It's going to be a challenge for some people, but we're kind of running out of runway here, I think.
Right.
The more I look at your reports, DEQ's being polite about the MAO, I don't think we have a lot of options left. So could we possibly do some kind of creative thinking about finances and restructure again?
Yes, no, I set these Excel spreadsheets up, so it's fairly easy to run different scenarios.
Right now, you're here on the spectrum. You're right here at minimum and at maximum, right?
Sure, yeah, so we can do whatever in between. Yes. Yep.
Yeah, I think we need to look at it, because we can't keep kicking the can.
And we've got, you know, we've got the rest of this year, for the most part, to have these... Let's have some conversation. Let's have some input. Maybe somebody's got a... An idea I haven't thought of, you know? There's... I'm open to any suggestion, you know? So to have some of these open conversations of, "What do you suggest?" If somebody says, "Don't do it," it's like, "Okay, what do you suggest?" Not doing it is pretty irresponsible, in my opinion.
Well, we probably all need to go out and find out what the cost of five-gallon buckets are going to be, to, you know?
Well, and, you know, I was just having a conversation with Jeb Back, I don't know if he's still there. Yes, he is. You know, talking about that rating, the one thing holding it down now is the water system. We don't...
Oh, I didn't know that.
Our water system is not reliable enough to bring those numbers up, you know, so...
Anthony?
What the concern is to me, I don't know that we've got the magnitude of the problem At this 10% rate, at the moment, the estimate to repair the systems is $126 million. What was that two years ago?
Exactly, probably $110, or...
Okay. What's it going to be next year? And what I'm going to say, without doing all those numbers in my head, okay, is that if we do 10% the way you're going, we're going to be at the same spot, if not behind.
I think to you...
Eighteen.
Yeah, I think to your point, at ten percent, we are not, we're not even catching up with inflation. So, the system's outrunning us, in a sense, the needs.
And that's why I'm saying, I don't know if we're going to, at this rate, I don't know, and you may be able to answer it better than I. Theoretically, we've got thirty years from someplace to get done. I don't think you'll get thirty years now.
You're probably right.
It may be more than that, which is not legal in the first place.
You know, a good question to ask, to kind of along that point, how long does someone expect the system to last? I mean, really, what, what would that be? And then you can just do the backwards math, real simple. I just kind of gave you an example of a hundred years, because our system doesn't last a hundred years. Yeah, maybe a pipe here and there, but your curbs and sidewalks and your pavement, it just doesn't, it's...
How old is some of our, I mean, like, what's the oldest, like sidewalks? I mean, I see the timestamp on there, what, the thirties, right, the twenties?
Right, and some of the rings where they tied their horses off.
Yes, yes, I mean, they're literally weird, so, I mean, we have some stuff that is that old.
Yes, yeah, I don't know specifically. I can go through the master plans, do talk about some of the different ages of the, of the system.
But you really, I mean, do you really have some sense about what's subterranean at this point? I mean, you guys are surprised almost every week, are you not?
Yes, and we try to share that with you guys on a monthly basis.
And we did.
Yes, no, it's, it's crazy. You know, and, and unfortunately, some of that stuff is fairly new stuff. It's just, wasn't done right, wasn't over, it had an oversight, and, you know, it was...
Standard, and now we do.
It was substandard, yeah.
And I think that's, actually, you bring up a good point, Jim, I mean, the fact that you guys shared some of the, right away, utilities coming in and doing the work that they were doing, and doing the, and doing it incorrectly...
Yes.
Would have cost our citizens additional money.
And now we're holding their feet to the fire. No, you come back and fix it.
And I'm, I'm glad you are, because this is, this is feeling a little bit overwhelming.
Right, like Twilight Zone.
And, and I think it's great that you're going to, with the messaging, and you're going to try to put something together, and, I mean, and to what? Counselor Tracy said a few minutes ago, we have got, if we can come up, solutions, that's what we need. And if it means listening to the community and hearing their ideas, and again, it may be something that somebody comes up with it, like you said, maybe none of us have thought about.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that's really important, because, but we have to have a resolution.
Yes.
And, and we can't keep just kicking this and thinking it's going to, it's going to get better, or it's going to go away.
Yeah, we're, we're going to get to a point, because we're starting to maintain our system, that we're, we're having, with the funds we have coming in, we have less and less to do capital. We are taking advantage of grants the best we can. I mean, we're getting ready to do another one. We're going to be to a point pretty soon where we can't even take advantage of those grants, because we can't match.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
And just another little tidbit of information, it just popped into my head. We have, we're collecting a system development fees. If we don't start spending those system development fees, we can plan on giving them back. We don't have the money to match, because most projects are not a hundred percent SDC eligible. So, you got to start, you got to start spending some of this money. If there is a hundred percent eligible SDC project, absolutely, but a lot of them are small percentages. We're just, we're just not sitting good there.
So, I think we just want you to come back, maybe at the next meeting, or when do you want us to relook at this?
Well, with your blessing, we're going to do ten percent in the next biennial budget for twenty and twenty-one.
Oh, you need a budget now, don't you?
Yeah, in the meantime, we'd like to run some scenarios to do an options list for the Budget Committee to look at. If we did twenty-five percent, here it is, but for now, we just want to build in ten percent.
Yes.
As a minimum, to deal with the MAO and stuff, and to give time to have these conversations.
Perfect, yeah. But again, on that ten percent, it won't start until 2020, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We, we're going to build into the budget that taking effect January one of 2020.
All right.
January one of 2021. So, the biennial budgets, we're planning on each one. And granted, this coming up over the course of this year, that may change.
Yeah, I don't, so, real quick, I don't think, I don't believe in, like, scare tactic for this kind of stuff, because I don't think it's necessary at all. But we really do need to paint the picture of what this system looks like.
Yes.
Well, I was going to say, and I think at a specific town hall, I mean, you were, you know, the, the main event, not that it was planned that way, but you end up being, you know, at one, and...
Just for this.
But just, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think the, the interest will be there, and also just the importance of it.
Yep.
Clock's taking notes, right there.
So, yeah, let's, let's...
And if there's anything the staff can do in addition to what we're already doing, to show what we're doing with the current funds, I mean, it's in the budget, we, we give you that budget report every month, the monthly reports, what we're doing. If there's anything else we can do to ease people's minds, or fill in a gap somewheres, let us know. We'll, we'll change it up, and we'll put some more out there. I don't know what that is, but we're, I think, we're doing a good job, but if there's something we're missing, let us know.
All right, I love your report. I do, thank you.
Let me mention one more thing, and people start throwing shoes at me, or whatever. How much does it help, that's a big question, if we speed up the process, rather than take twenty years or three years? Say we did it in five years. My belief is, we would save millions of dollars just doing that, okay? Is that even being considered?
No, it's not, and I'll tell you why. Yes, you would save money, but I don't know how you'd physically do it. I mean, you know, because that's forty miles of infrastructure in five years would be a real challenge. And then not to mention how much money you'd have to raise to do that, but...
Okay, so maybe it's six years or seven years. What I'm saying, we're looking at a number like twenty years.
The master plans are based on twenty, like you say.
We won't be able to do it in twenty years. It will take more than thirty, I believe, to do that. And I'm just suggesting that if we figure out a way, okay, now can your Public Works do that?
We'd probably have to hire twenty people.
That's fine, that's just an option, just a thought, okay?
Right, so that one charting here that says, "Do what the master plans say," that is on a twenty-year, that's what most master plans say, do it on twenty, a twenty-year fix, basically, and that's what those rates would do.
But if you do it less than twenty years, it will be less.
No, it absolutely would, because you're talking about today's dollar, and every year it goes up. So, the more you do now, the more we could have done ten years ago, I mean, just saves you money. So, the more you do sooner, absolutely, but it's, what can people stomach? What can you actually do is probably the bigger question there, I, I think.
Well, one of the things I believe is that we got enough people with brains in this city, okay, to help figure out and give ideas to do whatever, okay? I know there are many people in our community that this ten percent will bury in financials, okay? They're not going to be able to handle it. And we keep talking about homelessness and whatever, well, we're just going to drive that situation, make it worse. I believe that we need to figure out some ways, and I don't have a great answer. I believe enough people may work together to figure it out, that a lot of these people, we may not have to increase them at all.
Well, they're, that's what we're, we're suggesting, having these open houses, so people can bring their solutions and ideas on how to, how to, how to do this. Bring, bring the ideas, no, absolutely.
And maybe this number over here of a hundred and thirty-one bucks a...
A month.
A sixty, sixty-four seventy cent increase, you know, maybe that's real.
Well, that's what all the high-paid professionals are saying.
We do have one, someone in the audience that would like to speak. So, do we have any more questions for Jim? I think you have our direction to go ahead with the ten percent, and then we'll look at other options.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Wynter.
Yes.
All right, so we do have...
Yes, Bill Osborne.
There's three minutes.
Bill Osborne, most of what I was going to say was said or asked by you guys already. You know, I, I don't like seeing bills go up, but I understand sometimes they do. This is one of them that sounds like most likely we're going to have to increase, unfortunately. It, it's in the other areas. When we use the rationale that we are less than other cities, well, we may be losing in that run, but in property taxes, we're out front of most people. And as we talk about affordability and living, it's, the property taxes and these increases are one of the things that makes it difficult for people on a fixed income. I know most of you probably don't feel it, I don't feel it, but I talked to a lot of people who, you know, those little increases do hurt them. So, I would hope that, you know, this is looked at real serious, and the increases we have are the bare minimums, what we need. I would also like a little bit more transparency on this, like Counselor Tracy was talking about. Let people know why this is, educate people. That's a big thing, because usually what happens is our rates go up, nobody knows why. And a little more honesty. I was disappointed in the recent newsletter, where it was talking about the right-of-way fees. The right-of-way fee the city charges itself, and in the newsletter, it was talking about that people don't have to pass that through. The city itself passes it through to the residents, which I think is kind of double-dipping, but, you know, that's just my opinion on that. And I had to come down to City Hall just to find that out, it's not even printed on my bill. So, more openness, more honesty when we move through this process, to let people understand. Also, when there's bills, or taxes or fees, like the right-of-way fee that really wasn't needed, that was just a revenue generator. We need to stop and think about it, because while we're putting all these things in, I realize that we had a mayor here for thirty-six years, that was a nice guy, he's informed a lot on Gladstone history, but he didn't push things and keep things modernized, wanted to keep it like it was. And I realize we're paying the price for that now. But while we're trying to catch up all at once, there's a lot of growing pains that people are feeling, as they're trying to just balance their budget, keep their lights on, and keep their food and their medicine. So, again, let's just look at things that, you know, what we have to do, and let's put a hold, or, or, you know, pump the brakes on the, the extra fees and taxes that we're doing, just because other cities do it, that are just revenue generators. Because the affordability of, concept of living in Gladstone, it's, it's difficult. Property taxes are high, and with all these little bits and pieces, it makes it less and less affordable. And we see that with a lot of the families leaving Gladstone, even in the schools, the enrollment's down. So, wherever we can help, I, I hope you guys will look for that. And take time to educate people, talk to them, let them know what's going on, so that they can understand. They're not going to like an increase, nobody will, but at least you can understand why that's happening, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
That's all for this one.
All right, so the next item is number thirteen, Ordinance 1496, Amending the Gladstone Municipal Code, called the GMC, Chapter 9.60, Camping Prohibited in Certain Places, Section 9.60.030, Violation, Penalty to Class B Violation. Chief Yamashita.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try to make this quick as possible for you, it's been a long night for you. So, as my staff report indicated, this is mostly just a housekeeping matter. Back in September, the Ninth Circuit Court, sorry, a little oops, heard a case out of Boise, Idaho, about illegal camping. And this is something that I addressed in Sandy with David Dufman's help. So, when I recognized that our code here hadn't been updated, I thought we probably ought to do that. Basically, the way to address the case law change is to decriminalize the illegal camping. It doesn't mean we can't enforce it, which we still want the ability to do, because if we didn't have this ordinance, they could camp on the sidewalks, the school property, our parks, and things of that nature. But what we want to do is decriminalize this. So, this is just a recommendation to change it to a Class B violation, which is generally just a cash fine, and is not, does not subject them to arrest, and that puts us in compliance with the findings of the Ninth Circuit.
Which is what we should be.
We should definitely be.
Yes.
Yes, we don't need a lawsuit.
So, this is basically housekeeping?
Yes, ma'am, that's all this is.
Keeping us in compliance.
Do you need a motion?
Yes. What?
He's got a comment.
I do, and I'm, sorry, I didn't make a copy of Ms. Betts's reply to my, my question in regards to the fact...
Did you want me to read it?
Oh, you do, I appreciate it.
I mean, I did copy the counsel, but I can read it if you want.
But if it's law, we have to be in compliance, right, David?
No, he wants to change some other things.
Oh.
So, my, my thought, as I was reading through, through your report, and, and the Circuit Courts, oh, thank you. The case is that you're asking that we, like I say, decriminalize it, but we also have a lot of park rules that are criminalized, a majority of them. So, you've got a person that is found in a park after hours, can be arrested, because it's a classy misdemeanor. But if they're camping in the park, they can't be. And so, that's why I was asking and recommending that, since we're doing this, that we should roll back and decriminalize all but a couple of sections of the, the parks rules also.
Well, you certainly could do that. Those are not affected by this case, so it wouldn't be necessary to do.
But wouldn't it be the, the right thing to do?
That's a decision for the council to make.
Right, well, that's, and that's why I'm asking.
Can we take it to the Parks Board and have them review that?
So, well, we, we could, but there was, back when I was the liaison, there was some, some back and forth, and they were taking, they took the stance that we want to give the police as, as much teeth as possible in dealing with park rules. And I, you know, I, I think it's not, you know, that, that we're being over, you know, heavy-handed and overbearing if we're threatening somebody for arrest, you know, for just basically trespassing, or being, not well, being there after hours. But if they're camping, they can't be. I mean, it's, it, it doesn't jive for me, and I don't think it's being fair.
Well, it's definitely a tool the officers have available to them, but they also have discretion, right?
Well, sure.
And so, and so, a lot of whether they subject that person to arrest, or even charge them with a crime, is based on the totality of the circumstances. So, it very well could be that, that an individual needs to go to jail over that violation, and it could be where they don't, based on the totality of that event. So, giving, having that range from here to here gives that officer and their discretion a lot of latitude to be able to address each individual circumstance, given what's going on there.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it could limit the police's ability to have that latitude that they need, but...
Doesn't this case law do the same thing, limit?
It, it does, but it's restricted to this particular issue.
Right, right. Issue here is...
I'm sorry.
It's very specific.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, so, we need to wait for someone to get arrested, and then go to, you know, do the court, so that one, you know, the Circuit or Oregon, one of the Oregon Appeal Courts, or, or federal, say, hey, you're, you're violating the Eighth Amendment.
Well, the Eighth, but the Eighth Amendment violation is very specific to the fact that, that what the ordinance did in Boise criminalized, essentially criminalized being homeless. Because what, what the court said was basically, look, if, if people, if a community doesn't have shelter beds available, there isn't...
Which we don't either, I understand that, no, I understand that.
An opportunity to get off the street, then if you criminalize them from sleeping on public property, you've essentially criminalized the fact that they don't have a home. And that's different than, you know, discharging a weapon, or, or, you know, some of the other things. I think those are perfectly good, what you're suggesting, Counselor Reisner, is a good sort of policy discussion. Do we think those are appropriate penalties for those types of, of violations or not?
But not right now.
But it wouldn't be necessarily legally compelled, as, as is the case here.
So, can we focus on this one? And then that seems like a much bigger conversation that we can look at later.
Seems like we kicked a lot of things down the...
We do, but, I mean, we don't have enough information to really have an informed discussion about those issues right now.
I have one question. What was your reason for picking out this particular one?
I was doing some research on another ordinance, and I saw that this ordinance had not been updated commensurate with the current case law from September. So, because I found that this hadn't been corrected, I wanted to get it fixed.
Okay. Is there importance, an importance to fixing this one before others?
Yes, there was, there was a court case decided that made this ordinance, the way it was written, not legal. And if we had made an arrest, we could have been subject to a lawsuit. So, in order to reduce the city's liability, I felt that was prudent to do right away.
I had some suspicions that was the case. And what I'm going to suggest to everybody is that we go ahead and take care of this one, as she suggested, recommended. And then make a parade list of which ones are the next ones, and we deal with them accordingly, as we've got time allows.
Was that a motion?
Somebody needs to make a motion, then.
So, and this is an ordinance too, so you'd need to, if that's a sort of direction about how to approach it, that's one thing, but then you'll need to have a first reading and the rest, so...
Would someone like to make a motion, please?
Mayor, I make a motion to amend Gladstone Municipal Code, Section 9.60.030, Penalty Section, changing violations of Chapter 9.60 to a Class B violation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The motion was made by Counselor Tracy, seconded by Counselor Ripley. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you please call roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
No.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes. Since there was a no, we have to hold this over to the next month.
So, and just for the record, that was the first reading of Ordinance 1496, an ordinance amending Chapter 9.60 of the Gladstone Municipal Code.
All right. Thank you. Now, let me find my... All right, next item is Business Carried Forward, and we have two items, the Meldrum Bar Park Dock Grant and the Use of City Facilities for political reasons, I suppose.
First item, I sent you a copy of the staff report and the bid, and we would like to award the bid for the fabricate and deliver at Meldrum Bar Park to the lowest responsive bidder, which was CR Fabrication, LTD, in the amount of $127,448.49. And as you recall, we applied for a grant. We were successful for that. We went out to bid to have this work done. We opened bids after your council packet was published, so this is one that we wanted to walk on tonight so that we can expedite the process and get the contract on board to start the project.
And we're confident this is a capable contractor to do the work?
Absolutely. We had two bids for this, and they were both good, but also, like I mentioned in my email, having a project manager for the city representing us on this has been very professional and streamlined.
Okay. Any questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to award the bid for the aluminum boarding docks fabricate and deliver at Meldrum Bar Park for the City of Gladstone to CR Fabrication, LTD, in the amount of $127,448.49 once the protest period has expired.
I'll second it. Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Award. And next is the Use of City Facilities.
And actually, I'm going to defer on that, because there's only about three of you I need to talk to, so I will follow up with those individuals to get input on that. It was in regards to an email I sent you about two weeks ago.
From Mark Meek?
Yes.
Okay.
And so if you want, I can just follow up with those that haven't responded.
Yes, that'd be great. I see that he's using, he sent me an email inviting us to the Affordable Housing Town Hall at Ourwood Library. Okay. So next is Business from the Audience.
I have two. First is Bob Everett.
I'm awake. I'm sorry. I don't need to talk. Can I give these away?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know that I made enough, but, just in case, I'll make some more. I've got to save one because it's my master's coffee. Okay. All righty.
Fundraising. Ooh.
All right, Tom.
Five guys.
I'll get you one later here. Okay.
We can share. There we go.
I'll be quick.
All right.
Okay, I'm here representing the Gladstone Senior Foundation, and we are having a fundraiser at Five Guys Burgers and Fries, and it's going to be April 6th, and we get 15% of whatever is sold at that time. It'll be all day long, and so come on down and have some whatever they have, burgers and fries, I guess. I know I'll be down there before, I think there's also the auction that night at the Gladstone Education Foundation, so it's a busy day. I want to give an update a little bit on the foundation. We are in the process of doing a couple fundraisers, and beyond that, we are also be talking about how we want to spend the money that we get, obviously. And we always appreciate any donations, and we have been receiving a number of generous donations from a great number of people, and all of us want to thank everybody for doing that. We hope that the senior center will be fully operational soon, and therefore we'll be able to, you know, do some work around there and help out in any way that we can. So we're always looking for some people that might want to help out on the foundation in whatever manner they can. But thank you very much. Hopefully you can show, and, or else at least put one of these up somewhere then, too. Thank you. Okay.
For all your work.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Next is Nancy Ixted.
Did you get an answer on the application, the permit?
I can't read it.
You are? Okay.
The $5-a-day thing?
No, for them to use the nature park for the Arbor Day.
Thank you. We can't. Thank you. But you can't have burgers, I guess.
Right, no burgers for me.
I'm glad I didn't have to follow sewers. Nancy Ixted, 665 Barbary Place, and I'm here for the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park. We have our fourth Arbor Day coming up at the end of April, so I'm just alerting you now so you can get it on your calendar. This is a partial list of some of the things that are going to happen up there. I'm still working on getting the mayor up to the top of a tree.
[laughing]
We're negotiating that.
Not going to happen.
And we're still looking for vendors. We will have hot food this time, and hope to see all of you there. The licorice ferns are out, and they're spectacular. I walked the park with an arborist last month who was just dying over those. He said that that formation of the licorice ferns, those mats, take hundreds of years to develop like that. There's nothing like them close by, except for maybe camassia across the river in West Lynn. So we have a really unique habitat up there, and if you get a chance, go on up there. It's spring is starting. So, thank you.
A question. How much was, I need to get you a check for the tree before you take off?
$125.
Okay.
Read it into the record.
Anybody else?
We have a letter here for somebody who's not present. It's asking that at page one, to be read into the record. Legally, it's not required to. We could just hand it out to you. What's the preference?
Would somebody like to read it?
Oh, I'll be glad to. Use my teacher voice if that's...
Use the teacher voice.
Just that.
Nancy.
That's okay. So, thank you. So this is from Mindy Garland, Gladstone resident, homeowner. Gladstone City Council, March 12, 2019. At the February 12, 2019, City Council meeting, Agenda Item Number 14 was an appointment to the Budget Committee. I happened to be on that board and appreciate the knowledge, insight, schooling, and business experience that the people on that committee bring to the table at budget time. The council had three applicants from three super-qualified individuals who also happened to live in this town, pay taxes, and have graciously offered their time, experience, and expertise to help the city with a very important task at hand. Our budget is not a bargaining game. Our budget is millions of taxpayer dollars and collected funds that support our city and pay for necessary infrastructure, including repairs, upgrades, and new projects. Of the seven members of this council, three of you elected not to vote for any of the three applicants. There isn't a person who attended or watched that meeting online that couldn't clearly see that there was a pre-agreed-upon vote that was decided amongst the three. One has to wonder the reasoning behind the votes, for who the ringleader of the agreement was. I frankly don't care. What I will say is that it needs to stop. The people in town will not tolerate these tricks and shenanigans. You are toying with our hard-earned money, and for the folks in this town who go to work every day and pay their fair share of taxes, this is no joke. Gladstone residents might be interested in knowing that more than half the members of this council have been through personal bankruptcy, and one member is currently involved in a second. So you do not care about your money. Should we be concerned about our lack of financial knowledge? I'm sorry. Should we be concerned with your lack of financial knowledge? If one is unable to unclog a sewer, one finds someone who can. Bottom line is, if you can't do it, you should find people that can, and that would have been one of those three applicants that you passed on. Please leave your personal games out of this room and start doing what the people in this town thought you would do when they voted for you. And again, that was from Mindy Garland, Gladstone resident and homeowner.
All right, thank you. Anybody, any other business from the audience?
No.
Okay, so business from the council. Start with Counselor Ripley.
I don't have anything.
Counselor Neese?
I don't have anything.
Counselor Tracy?
Just really quick, appreciated going to City's luncheon and having our mayor along with two other mayors address the luncheon. Lot of information out there, but it's also kind of scary times for all the cities. So thank you for stepping up, Mayor. I thought you did a good job, and I appreciated Mayor Gamba, too. I thought he was, he really showed us how much he cares about his citizens.
About the environment.
So anyway, it was good, and I think that everybody had, of the three cities that did take, that were there, that showed up, Gladstone, Milwaukee, and Happy Valley, all three mayors, for the most part, with the exception of Tom, a little bit on Happy Valley, but all three mayors talked about the stressors on the city, the external stressors and the financial stresses, and so it seems to be kind of the sheet of music that's being played right now. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Counselor Reisner?
Just a reminder, you know, coming up, next couple Mondays, we've got Budget Committee meetings, and as just mentioned, you know, that's the footprint of the future over the next couple of years as to where, you know, where we spend money also kind of dictates policy, because you can't do anything without money in government. And also wanted to apologize for our late start. We had some discussions about personnel that we really needed to hammer down tonight, so sorry that, the big delay. Thank you.
Counselor Todd?
I'm good, thank you.
Counselor Mercero?
I'm good for the night.
I would recommend that everybody look at the civic activity detail from the counselors, and thank you to the counselors that are providing that. It's helpful. There's so many meetings that we attend, and that's where you're going to find out what's going on regionally and within local committees. There's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe, guys. Big dollar items, especially being pushed by Metro. $2.2 and 1/2 billion plus-plus transportation bond. They're looking at putting on our ballot ASAP, coupled with a parks bond, and then the affordable housing bond. This is huge stressors on us. It's going to be big-ticket items. So please pay attention. Let us know how you feel so that we can carry that forward in our committees. So that's all I have. Anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I move it. Will you adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy, seconded by Counselor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 9:02 PM.